Call the order, the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. We rise to pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance. Of the United States.
States of America.
And to the republic.
For which.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God. Individually.
Venezuela.
With liberty. And justice. First item on the agenda is approval of vouchers from October. They have been reviewed and signed, correct?
Yes.
Is there?
Yes, they have.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Come on to the minutes of August, two thousand and twenty. September will be done next meeting. Everyone have a chance to read through these? Is there a motion to accept, or are there any changes?
I thought there were good motions to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty. Moving on to the winter parking update. Do you want to give a quick rundown of that either Dave or Mindy?
I guess it's gonna be, how many spaces do we end up with, seven or eight?
I thought seven, yeah.
Seven, and Mark's putting up signs when he gets them made up, right?
Yep.
He took that upon himself, so he's gonna get them made up. He's gonna post the signs at Adams Street, and he's gonna put markers in the Masonic Lodge parking lot outside of other village end, so they know where to park. People must know to park in the right direction, because the parking lot was full over the weekend, and the real park's facing the right way, so let's hope it goes that way for the winter.
Yeah, Saturday, there was one port all the way in by the trailhead that parked on the wrong side, but I think they did that because they didn't want to block in the driveway of the residence there. But yeah, it was a good test over the weekend. I, I mean, there was a pretty good deal of cars in there, probably nine or ten.
I went right here, they were, they basically, it was full of cars, and one from Florida, and all the rest in Jersey.
Yeah, that's what I noticed too, Florida and Jersey.
Yep.
And again, we'll just repeat that the parking, winter parking on Adams Avenue, we're gonna reconstitute that, but it's kind of a, you know, one strike and you're out thing. If people don't abide by the moving car times, then we'll have to take it away.
Do we even have any means of, like, if the cars don't move ticketing them, or anything like that? Because we have nobody who can ticket. You know, unless Bill, we get, we can get Bill to ticket, but I don't know how that, how that would work.
I think the Sheriff's Department could take it, because it's a, you know, it's a law of the village, it's posted, just like the winter parking on the normal streets. If, you know, Mark needs a car moved, or someone's blocking them in, I think the Sheriff's Department will enforce it as long as we have it marked, and it's on, on our code.
Alright.
But, I mean, we can double check with Brian about that as well. Anything else on winter parking? Updated fee schedule, I don't, Bill's not here, so can you send him a text, Mindy?
Yeah.
We'll move on, and we'll come back to it.
Yes.
We'll go on to the short-term rental regulation. Do either of you want to speak to that? Dove or Chris?
Um, well, I can speak to the distribution of the survey, and the engagement thus far, we have about twenty-eight responses. It's been shared on Facebook, it's on our website in three places, actually. They will appear in the, in the papers this week, thanks to Mindy. And Mindy's also going to try to send it via the email blast list that she's creating, and we have hard copies at the Village Hall as well.
I'm just taking it randomly now to kind of go through it, and I won't submit it at the end. So yeah, I mean, that's a pretty good turnout for basically a weekend of notice out to the community. Again, it's the people who are most passionate about the issue are probably gonna be the ones who respond, but we're giving everyone the opportunity to, to talk about it. We've had, you know, meetings in the past where we focused on it. Cold Springs had meetings about it where they focused on it. I think we, as a village, are probably at the stage that we're gonna look to make a decision or something on some type of local ordinance in the next meeting or two. I mean, that timeline probably sounds about right.
I think it's important that, well, I guess at the beginning of the survey, I say that this isn't meant to replace public meetings, so we, we just want to make sure to schedule in those public meetings.
Yeah, I definitely public hearing before we put forth any kind of ordinance, or, you know, vote on anything. But I, I personally would hopefully like to see that happen the next month or two, just because it's another one of those issues that we talked about for a long time. And, I mean, I, I just think that this whole lockdown and COVID has really brought it to the forefront of the gaps and enforcement in all the communities around here. And I, I do wish that Putnam County would take it upon themselves to tackle the issue for all of us, but again, we're, you know, local municipalities, and we'll do it ourselves. Anything else about short-term rentals or the survey?
The only thing I'd like to add is the final question allows for people taking the survey to leave contact info if they want somebody from the board to follow up. And so far, we've just gotten four or five names, but maybe Chris, you and I, but I don't know, Mike, if you want to be the person contacting them, it doesn't matter at all to me, but I can just, we can think of a way of distributing that.
Yeah, I mean, we can divide it up amongst us, or if somebody wants to be a point of contact for this issue, that, that's by all means, that could be appropriate too.
Okay, great.
And then?
I, I know myself that the people, like I said, that are most passionate about the issue have definitely gotten my ear over the past, you know, six months, so I, I I could probably write down, you know, a list of people that are, you know, gonna show up to the, the public meeting, but. Lisa, did you have something to add?
Me? No.
Okay.
And Dove, what was the due date again?
I think we said November.
November eleventh.
Yeah.
And in case, you know, if we need to extend it a week, we can, but that's three or four weeks to get time to respond.
And when it, I think it's plenty of time.
And then we'll be able to discuss it, the results of the survey.
At the November meeting.
At our November meeting.
Yeah.
And review other legislation that we have up on the website now, from our close municipalities, Beacon, Irvington, Montgomery, Hornwall, Hornwall. And it, Mike, just to, you're bringing up the timeframe, I think it just might take a little time for our lawyers to draft anything, but as soon as we're able to draft, we want to definitely, obviously, give folks time to respond to the written draft.
Yeah, that, that timeline may be very optimistic, given some other items that may, or may come down the pike or not, so.
Yep. We'll keep pressing it forward.
Yeah.
The, the one thing in the responses so far is there's a large consistency, actually, in what the feedback, for the most part, so I think it'll be interesting, and we'll, we'll share all of them, all the results.
Alright, great.
I'm sorry, are we going back in person in November, or is that up in the air still?
We're not sure yet.
Okay.
I mean, I could probably, real quickly, check NICOM as we're on the call right now, and see if they've see if they've updated their guidance for that. Last time I looked, they extended it through the first week of November. I'm very, I have a cluttered screen right now with Zoom. Mindy, have you checked this lately, or no?
No, the last I saw was the sixth, November sixth.
Yeah, that was the last one that I saw as well. Maybe if I get a second to, to pop in here, I'll, I'll look later on in the meeting.
Okay.
But yeah, as of now, it was November sixth. I'm assuming, given the trend of the nation in general, that they will probably extend that, and I, I honestly don't see us meeting in person until the beginning of next year, until October.
There's some kind of error on here.
Y'all good, Dave?
I got no, I have no, I don't have you, I have everybody.
Error, like a error.
Alright.
You got it?
I didn't touch nothing. There was a line across it saying, attention.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Anything else about short-term rentals, and before we go on? Real quick, I just had a few updates. I attended a WebEx meeting with Hudson Highland State Park officials, local EMS, Sandy Gallup's office, Dave Morandi, Richard Shea, just about what's going on at Breakneck and at the Indian Brook.
Indian Brook?
Yeah. Hudson Valley Greenway was, or the Fjord Trail people were there as well. Basically, it's every meeting I go to, this, the, the second or third one this year, we've had on the subject, and everyone leaves at the end with the feeling of, you know, it's kind of an uncontrollable problem that's going on right now. So the ne- next steps are to talk to the New York, New York State DOT to see about some parking issues and things along nine D. The Fjord Trail is having another public meeting. That'll be noticed. You know, one of my questions for the Fjord Trail is, you know, it's a great project, but they're admitting that their project is probably gonna bring more visitation, and given the overcrowding and absolute disaster that we have now, without a real concrete plan for parking or shuttle service, or however they're gonna handle this, you know, all three of the municipalities are really kind of fearful of what's to come. Because, you know, it, it was busy before COVID, and I think all of us will agree that it's gotten completely insane the last couple of weekends, that, to the point where, you know, residents can't even enjoy their own village or surroundings, because you, you can't go anywhere, it's just, it's outrageous. But I, I hope it's been a boon for the restaurants and the antique shops and, and Main Street, but, you know, we've, we've maintained relatively quiet in Nelsonville, but, you know, like Dave was saying earlier, our trailhead parking is completely full. It's only a matter of time before they start to spill out on the street if it gets any more popular, and, you know, there's other areas of the village too.
They're up on Fishkill Road, too.
Yeah, and, and we're a residential community for the most part, and that could really have impact on, you know, quality of life for our residents if, you know, our streets are now packed with traffic like Main Street and Cold Spring. So.
Bill should be popping on.
Great. Beyond that, yeah, Sunday, I got a few calls from residents about speeding motorcycles on Main Street. I saw one go by my house doing like seventy miles an hour. So I called the Sheriff's Department, asked them for increased patrols. I, I do that periodically, whether it helps or not, I'm not sure. I mean, I know that they are very overtaxed as well, given all of the visitors in the village, but, I mean, when a, when a motorcycle comes up Main Street and hits the village line doing forty, and then all of a sudden accelerates to seventy-five miles an hour by the time it hits a frost property, I mean, that's a real accident waiting to happen. And it's not just motorcycles, it's, you know, everything, cars, everything. And then, thirdly, the car break-ins, which I, I fell victim to like an idiot, but, you know, I got most of my possessions back. They did end up hitting like over a dozen cars in Nelsonville and North Islands and Cold Spring. Last update I got from the Sheriff's Department was that they had the plate number of the individuals, ran the plate number in the city new berg, and the plates were stolen that were on the car. So they, they you know, the smart amateurs or some professionals, because they've evaded capture now, from, they, they've done this numerous times, not just our community, but a bunch of others around here, so. And I know they, they hit Billy's way pretty bad, that's where most of the camera footage came from, so. Correspondence, Mindy, or actually, do any other trustees have anything they want to give kind of quick updates on before we move on?
I don't have an update, but I just wanted to know what the next step was for CCA. I know we had the last public meeting tonight.
We have to wait and hear from them now, because they're, they're like moving us into like a, a whole group, right, like their next group thing they were saying, so I'll probably hear from them sometime in the next day or two.
Yeah, there was a whole, um, gosh, I can't remember where it was, but it was, there was another community, and they were going to do both of us at the same time.
Right.
Okay, and then the opt-in, opt, or the, if someone would like to opt out, do, maybe we just, maybe the next time we meet, we'll be able to give some update about that.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, have you attended the meetings that they've had? I, I was just curious, did the price that they were offering go up over the summer and early fall, or is it remain pretty constant?
They said it remained pretty constant. There was a blip along with everybody, but that it leveled out. I didn't attend today, as I attended the last one.
One other update we should probably talk about real quick was the optimum issue that we had the meeting with the representative from their, I guess, help desk or line crews, I don't know what you want to call them. Basically, they admitted that they had issues with service and with equipment, and, you know, we're keeping on top of them. I, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but there's been some more issues over the past couple of days around, so you know, just keep notifying them. I keep telling the residents to let Mindy know, and we'll, we'll turn your names in with the rest of the village that lets us know, and the more we get, the, the more they get closer to that threshold where they need to actually address the equipment issues.
And we were supposed to get the three sixty review results?
Yes.
This week, maybe, was it?
Well, they said two weeks, and we spoke to them last week, so it's probably next.
It was two weeks ago.
Was it two weeks?
I thought it was two weeks, yeah.
It might not be to the date, but it was.
Okay, so we should, then we should be hearing, I'll double check.
Thank you.
I think it was a Tuesday, right, Tuesday, so it was.
It was the fifth.
Okay, wow. Time is flying.
Really is. Correspondence, Mindy, do you want to discuss that?
Okay, um, so we have a couple of letters from residents. We have one about gravel for Seacore Cedar Trail to the mayor and the board of the Village of Nelsonville. As you most likely know, there's a low area in the path between Seacore Street, parking lot beside the Masonic Temple and Cedar Street, which becomes a large slick patch of mud in wet weather. I don't believe it hurts anybody, but it's unpleasant. Would the village consider laying a few inches of item for gravel on top of it to raise the path and improve drainage and footing? If it's outside the village's purview, could the village contact OSI or whoever owns that segment of trail about it? The patch in question starts about twenty feet in from the Seacore Street parking lot and continues for twenty-five to thirty-five feet. It is bordered by swamp on both sides. Thank you, David Lindberg to Crown Street. That's the first one, and next, about air quality and wood smoke to the mayor and board of the Village of Nelsonville. A number of people in Nelsonville heat their homes partially entirely with wood. Regrettably, the smoke from their wood stoves, pellet furnaces, and fireplaces drifts over the whole area. A lot of Nelsonville is functionally a hollow, so the smoke stays pretty much in place for a while. In the colder months, when people are heating their homes this way, I wind up coughing and sneezing from the smoke, even though I'm in my house with the doors and windows closed. When I walk the dog at night on cold nights, I can see plumes of smoke coming out of chimneys and drifting slowly down the street. I know that fireplaces and wood stoves are pleasant and comforting, and I'm sure that monitoring fuel quality and having the chimneys cleaned regularly gets expensive, but the air quality gets so bad from the wood smoke that I am suffering and I am worrying about my health. I am sure that I'm not the only one feeling these effects. Can the village please look into this? It would involve visual inspection of smoke on cold nights and air quality testing to start with. Thank you, David Lindberg to Crown Street. And then, um, this is Dead Trees at eighty-one Haley. This is from Jeff McIntyre. Hi, Mindy, I hope this finds you and you're sparing safe and well. The folks at Central Hudson used for tree service finally came and felled the tree. You, I, and the mayor worked to identify for them during the morning before our most recent storm, which was great timing. Thank you kindly once again for everyone's assistance in this regard. It's amazing that the process started last August when I first called you about the whole matter. That said, there are two that about my and my nearest up-street neighbor's house that have been dead a long time and are right up roadside on the village property line. They stand directly across from the power lines, and so I presume it's a matter of time before they two topple. I'm more concerned about the bare one from the way it creaks and light winds. So, um, I have some pictures, and, um, so anyway, we have pictures of it for review, and being that it's, okay, also, Greg and Eliza Nagle are neighbors that have flagged this previously, but it thought it would be a good sign to bring them to your attention or check on the progress of flagging them to Central Hudson. We waited a full calendar year before they felled this last one, so I figures there's no time like the present. So, um, anyway, I started the ball rolling with Central Hudson, because that's something that, you know, is gonna affect their lines, and if they see that, they'll usually take it down.
Thank you.
Great.
Um, for the other two letters from David, do people have ideas?
I was gonna ask, is that the same spot that Heidi is doing her garden, or is this a different spot?
No.
The spot that goes right in, you know, about twenty feet in after the garden, and it does ice up in the wintertime, but I, I'm not sure that, I mean, I can, I can get in touch with Will Neves and see what he has to say about it, which might be the way to go, because I'm not sure number four, they used to put that on the road on Old Albany Post Road, it just washes right off.
Yeah.
Um, in the first rain, so.
We actually, when Nelsonville first took over the Hundred Acre parcel, we put a whole slew of item four in that exact area, and it's just been absorbed into the swamp, so.
But that would, that would be great, Lisa, if you could ask Will if he has any suggestions, like, maybe it's not gravel, maybe it's something else.
I mean, a, a boardwalk of some sort through that area would probably be what they're gonna recommend, just something that's above the grade that's there, because it does flood.
Yeah.
That would be neat.
Yeah, that'd be a good scout project.
Yeah. And then the, the smoke condition, you know, that's, that's something that I've noticed that I was really kind of hyper vigilant about, when my son had his respiratory issues right after he got out of the hospital, because a lot of smoke was coming into the house, and, you know, I hadn't noticed it before, but it is kind of a nuisance to some people, because they let their, you know, the chimneys burn down low or something like that, and it does get really smoky. And it seems like it's, it definitely is right at the crest of the hill as you go down into the village. Some nights you walk out there, and it's kind of like a haze that just kind of settles over everything. I've spoken to Bill about it. If, if, it's a real, real smoke condition, you, there's always the option of calling the fire department to have them come and address it, because it could be, it could be almost a chimney fire kind of about to happen or something like that. But beyond that, I, I don't think Bill has any way to measure smoke or anything like that, so.
That's what Bill suggested, even with that letter that we had gotten from, that you had gotten from Tina Miranda. I should have read that, I should have read that, I didn't even, anyway, because we, it's like was just happened. But I was discussing that with him, and he said they should have called the fire department, and then the fire department will call him in, but they would go in and address it right there while it's happening, which is something he can't do.
Who, would the fire department?
Yeah, wood burning chimneys.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, you got people with wood burning stoves, you got people right there with the chimney is going outside.
Yeah.
It's like, you try to stop that, it's gonna be really hard to go and do.
No, I mean, it's you know, the chimney is, there are some regulations that, that rule over those, they have to be a certain distance from structures and from neighbor, neighbors' houses and stuff like that. I mean, the real concern is things like pellet stoves and things like that, where you do need a permit when you put them in, and a lot of people forego the official route and have them put in themselves. But again, it's, until, you know, it gets to Bill's plate or to the fire department's plate, there's nothing you can really do about it.
Mike, is it possible to test the air quality at, at certain points, just to even just have a baseline and see if it gets worse?
I'm sure it's possible, I, I, I know that we don't have the ability to do it.
I can do it.
You can do it?
Yeah, I have, we have, we have a, um, air quality monitor at work I can bring home. It's a portable, it's, it's a portable one, it's very, they're, they're not very expensive. This one I think was a, well, we got it on a grant, but I think it's like a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I can even tell David if he wants to, and it measures the AQI, and then, PM two point five, I think, would be what he would be most interested in, it measures that, which is particulate matter two point five, which is the one that is small enough to get into your lungs and cause such, you know, circulatory system issues.
That would be awesome, Lisa.
I mean, you know, compared to like, I mean, you know, I'm sure, you know, compared to like California now and places, you, you know, it's where their, their PM two point five was off the, off the charts. It was worse than anything that ever was in Beijing or Mumbai, or, you know.
It would definitely be interesting, though, to get kind of a baseline for the community and see.
Yeah, definitely.
Changes do happen. Anything else about correspondence? Any new issues? I mean, I, I'm kind of concerned that we don't have anybody else in the meeting. I hope people didn't have a, a hard time getting on tonight. Ethan Tim was here, and then he went off and came back, and now he's gone, but.
Bill Bajarski has no Wi-Fi. Bill Bajarski can't get on with his laptop, he has no Wi-Fi, but he's in Putnam Valley.
So, tell, tell Bill to join the Twenty First Century, so.
I said, yeah, I said, try your phone, let, let's see if he can get on with his phone, because I sent him the link by email.
If, if need be, we'll have some kind of special meeting to discuss the, the fee schedule, because I, I do want to move on that, because
Yeah.
Like I mentioned at our workshop, everybody saw the iPhone twelve announcement.
Yep, it's breathing down.
Oh, wait, here he comes now, here we go.
Ah, the phone must have worked. Hi.
Your ears ringing, Bill? I think that's a static picture of himself.
Okay.
Let's see, Billy, you there?
Yeah, I made it on, I had to use my phone.
There you go, alright, so I, are you able to see that, what's on the screen?
Alright, the agenda, I have the agenda in front of me.
Alright.
There we go. Okay, yes, that is the schedule we talked about.
Alright, so do you want to kind of give a quick run-through or rundown of how we got to where we are?
Well, we brought, um, what I've done is reviewed the fees and brought them up to date based upon my experience over the last couple of years. Most notably, I believe, we've, you know, attacked the, the area and fees surrounding cell towers, antennas, the, the new small wireless systems, basically known as five G, and the related costs that go with it. Do you want it, me to explain the numbers, or how do you want me to handle it?
Yeah, I mean, so what's the board's feeling on this? We'll discuss this tonight, and then look to vote on our, at our next meeting to accept. This is kind of the first shot we've had to have this out in the public.
Can I just say something about the fees for the five G short-term rentals? Bill and I put the maximum amount that was listed in the FCC guidance for these. That guidance might change, it's currently for these. That guidance might change. It's currently part of a lawsuit. Um, and so if, if municipalities are allowed to charge more, then I would suggest in the future that we update the fee schedule, but this is sort of the safe zone, the safe area. Um, we just followed the FCC guidelines directly, just to make sure that we weren't putting the village at risk for any liability of, um, imposing unfair fees.
No, that's definitely prudent, given what we've all just experienced. Uh, before this, Bill, I, I mean, what kind of increase are we talking about? Is it across the board? I don't have the old fee schedule in front of us.
Well, I mean, for instance, if you notice, uh, certain areas in the left-hand column are highlighted. These are the areas that were, uh, adjusted. And, uh, what it did is, uh, what I try to do is apply, uh, my time, uh, versus the fee. The concept of a fee is to cover the cost of the municipality, uh, to administer, uh, the, that portion of the building, uh, code. So, um, what we've done is, um, just looked at areas where we saw that there was efforts being put in and, uh, time needed to be, uh, adjusted. Uh, like, for instance, uh, you know, uh, at the very top of the list is a, uh, workover of municipal property. Uh, what that comes down to is, is anybody's just painting a building over the, uh, village property. This is to cover the village, uh, to make sure they have the proper insurance should anything happen. So there's a fee just for us to administer that and for me to keep an eye on it. Some of the fees were, uh, very small. We are less than anybody else in the area in regard to our fees. I mean, if you go to the very last item after administrative fees, it talks about the annual fee, um, uh, as Dove mentioned, in regard to basically, uh, leasing the right to use municipal property. Uh, so tho- these are things that are governed. In that case, it's the, uh, guidelines from the FCC. Uh, if you go up and down, uh, various things, we just noticed that, uh, we were way below and we weren't, uh, necessarily covering my time. Okay, uh, you figure we have to cover my time and related costs that go with it.
Any questions for Bill while we have him on here?
Um, I just have a, a quick question. Where it says in the notes, like, one year, and what does that refer to?
Uh, basically, a permit is, uh, there's two steps to the permit process I've implemented in Nelsonville. Uh, one of the things is, in the past, a fee was paid entirely upfront, uh, upon application. Uh, bef- uh, so that if, uh, my, after our review and comments, if the, uh, person decided not to go ahead with the project, they would still pay the maximum fee. The way I implemented it, implemented it now is that anytime we, um, take a filing and we just get a filing fee of seventy-five dollars, and I could pretty much see uh, and let the person know what they're doing. After that, if they move forward, then the permit fees issue based upon the, um, intensity of the project. Some cases, it's, it's determined by a flat fee, or it's determined by square footage, as in a, a case of alterations and additions, um, new buildings, uh, new residences. So the whole process was set up so that it, uh, the, the village gets what it needs to cover its costs, yet we don't overburden the, um, the taxpayer with fees. On top of that, we do, though, uh, expect taxpayers to pay for their use of the, uh, village administration, as in the case of a building permit.
And is that the one year they have to have it completed within?
Oh, I'm sorry. I went right off on a tangent on you. Uh, yeah, it's one year. Uh, by state law, we can, uh, give a permit. Uh, the, the word permit, you see, again, there's two things, there's filing and there's permit. Once we issue the permit, it's good for one year and it's renewable, uh, for two more one-year terms. That's what the one-year indicates.
If, well, after, after that, in other words, three years is delivered on a permit?
Uh, after three years, uh, they have to reapply.
All right.
And that is actually, if, uh, if we look into New York state law, uh, the building code, it administers it as, uh, that is the standard administered by the state of New York.
So, what happens under our code if somebody does work without a permit?
Uh, there is a, uh, if you look down, um, there is a fee for working without a permit, uh, to cover or enforcement of it. It says working without permit. Uh, what we did is, um, uh, actually, I didn't, uh, highlight it, but, uh, it's line seventy-one. Uh, it says two hundred and fifty dollars for every five days of violation. So if they don't, uh, either, if they continue to work or they continue to work and don't apply for a permit every five days, we, uh, have to give them, we hit them with administrative fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. So in ten days, it'll be five hundred, and fifteen days, it'll be seven fifty, and so on.
Have we ever used that, do you know?
No. No, I, we, I go by the opportu- giving people the opportunity to rectify whatever, whatever problem we're involved in. Uh, so what they do is nine or ten times after I approach them, uh, I mean, all the time so far. I've been there three years, and in three years, people have uh, complied with, uh, following the, uh, proper procedure.
Great. Uh, any other questions, feedback? I mean,
Yeah, just to reiterate, um, the mayor is to, that these fees, if you look at, uh, the, uh, village of Cold Spring and the, um, town of Phillips Town, and for that matter, even our adjoining town of Punta Valley, um, the, these fees are lower than I, I believe than everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yet they do cover the village's administrative costs.
Thank you so much, Bill, for working on this. This is important.
Yeah, it is, and we, um, the, um, especially with the telecoms, they are announcing five G across the country already. So, um, this is something we need to have been ready to address.
Yeah, to be honest, I'm a little concerned even waiting until next month, because part of the FCC guidance was that these were printed and published um, before an application comes in, so I think we're, we'd be okay waiting till next month, but that's kind of the urgency.
Well, I would recommend that this be, i- if you do see this as appropriate tonight, uh, and you take a vote, I would implement it. I would suggest implementation as of, uh, November first.
Yeah, uh, that was my question. I have no problem voting on this tonight. I, you know, we've worked on this now going on a couple of months.
Yep.
Right. Not, it's not a, you know, a new law that we're passing. It's just increasing in building. Right. So we did check with Brian earlier in the summer, I believe, and, you know, we can vote on this whenever we want to, so if I'm open, if somebody wants to make a motion, we could definitely go forward with it.
I'd like to make a motion to, to vote on it, to pass this updated fee schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Does anyone have any, uh, issues with moving forward or any thoughts about any of the fees? I mean, I, I do know that they're lower than some of the other municipalities, so I mean, if we come across things that we want to tweak in this, by all means, bring them up in the coming weeks and we can definitely look into that. And Bill, we're always, you know, deferring to your expertise on the matter, so if, you as well.
Right, I just, right now, the, these are, uh, again, uh, based upon what it, it costs, uh, the village for me to be um, employed, uh, based on an hourly rate plus whatever, uh, you know, additional costs there are, you know. Do you seem to be in line with, with those rates, with the amount of time it takes? So if somebody makes fifty dollars an hour, for example, and I don't get paid fifty dollars an hour, just to clarify that, um, what happens is if it takes me three hours to administer one of these permits, it should be, um, it should be valued at a hundred and fifty. Okay, in that case, uh, it is lower. I'm not sure what my rate is right now, but it, we do cover the cost of doing this. And the one thing I'm proud to say, and I do not to toot my own horn, but the, the department does cover its own expense right now by uh, charging, you know, reasonable fees.
All right, uh, there's a motion seconded. Any other comment? All those in favor? All right. Opposed, none? Uh, good. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Do you need me for anything else?
I don't think so. I think we're all set.
I'll be happy to hang on if any questions come up.
All right. Well, we're almost done, I believe.
Yeah, I, I apologize, I'm having internet problems with my, uh, laptop at home, so I resorted to my cellphone.
I was gonna make, take a guess. Do you have optimal?
Yeah, actually, of course.
Uh, any other new issues that we haven't discussed? Oh, I mean, we, we, we can touch upon what's the, the rumor that's out there if you want. You know, that there may be some kind of further legal challenge to the cell tower, but nothing has come in writing, so, you know, to be continued.
Yep.
Uh, Billy, you're still there, correct?
Uh, yes, I am.
Uh, next steps for the cell tower, they have the green light as of November first.
That's correct.
And, you know, they've, we have issued whatever permits we need to. They've, you know, fulfilled their, their duty to us so far.
Uh, they have, uh, they have their permits in, uh, place. Uh, they have told me that they plan on November first to move forward with, uh, you know, applicable actions and, uh, periodically, and neighbors do inform me that they have not done anything at the site.
All right. So we can expect there to be lots of phone calls on November first.
Lots of Sunday.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. I don't think it matters.
They, they might be out there, you know, midnight on the, the thirty-first or the thirtieth, whatever it is, Halloween night, right? Thirty-first. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board? I think this is the first time we've, haven't had a crowd, so, uh, I don't believe we have any public comment. So if there's a motion to adjourn, I'll entertain.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you, uh, before you guys sign off, I did want to say one other thing is that, you know, everybody here, especially Dave, uh, you did a great job on the paving on Division and Bank, and, you know, I, it, it really is a, a an awesome thing to see everybody kind of work together and get something done for the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.